Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. I now call this meeting to order on April 11th, 2019 at 7:04 PM. At this time, I'll take a roll call. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Steven.
Present.
Commissioner Sims. Absent. Commissioner Dejeanay.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Vice Chair Corsick, absent, and Commissioner Brugeras.
Here.
Vice Chair Corsick and Commissioner Sims both advise staff on their absences in advance. At this time, we would like to welcome Commissioner Brugeras and ask him to lead us to the pleasure of allegiance.
Is the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
We're now going to move to the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Baker and seconded by Commissioner Harris to approve the agenda. I'll now initiate voting. We're actually going to do a roll call vote. I apologize. Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Steven.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims, absent. Commissioner Dejeanay.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Corsick, absent, and Commissioner Brugeras. The motion carries. We're now moving to the selection of chairperson and vice chairperson.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to point out a couple of your options at this point. Our rules of procedure state that annually, we select a new chairperson and vice chair from amongst you. You have a couple of options at this point. Any one of you can make a motion to nominate a particular commissioner for the chairperson or vice chairperson position, at which time it will initiate a vote, and if successful, that person will become the chairperson or vice chairperson. You also have the option, if you'd like to continue the selection to the next meeting, to have all seven of you present, you have simply to make that motion as well, and if that occurs, we will follow that up with a motion to nominate one of you to be the chairperson pro tem who will chair the rest of the meeting. Did you have any questions on the options that are before you? If not, the clerk can entertain any motion to nominate somebody for chair or vice chair or a motion to continue the selection to the next meeting.
I nominate Sims for chair.
No, it wouldn't go forward unless there was a second.
I s-
Oh, I s- Yeah, at this time, you would take a vote.
At this time, we're going to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Steven.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims is absent. Commissioner Dejeanay.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Corsick is absent, and Commissioner Brugeras.
Because we have a new chair, Chair Sims, and he's not here today to accept, we'll confirm with him at the next meeting that he's willing to accept, and if for any reason he doesn't, we'll have to take a new vote on that matter. So at this point, you're still left with a choice to make a motion for the vice chairperson or to make a motion to continue.
I nominate Ray Baker for the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Harris.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Steven.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims is absent. Commissioner Dejeanay.
I second it.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Corsick, absent, and Commissioner Brugeras.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, at this time, Vice Chair Baker, being the new vice chair, will be the chair for the remainder of the meeting in the absence of Chair Sims.
Do we, let's see, consent calendar, where are we starting here, Ash? Okay. Okay, first thing will be, you want me, the, let's see, you don't have the consent calendar on here, but-
If, Mr., apologies, if you would start with the public comments procedure and simply read that.
Okay, got it. Public comments procedure, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form must be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson and speaking to the commission. Members of the public are limited to three minutes per person except for the project applicant. The commission may establish an overall time limit for commitments on a particular agenda item. Members on the public must direct their questions to the chairperson of the commission and not to other members of the commission, the applicant and the staff or the audience. The next item is the public comments on any item not on the agenda. Are there any speakers for these items on the agenda?
At this time, we have no speakers.
Not on the agenda, I'm sorry. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda will be the approval of the consent calendar. Do we have any speakers or requests for this item?
No, sir.
Thank you. There are two items on the consent calendar, the minutes of the March 28th, 2019 special meeting study session and the minutes of the March 28th, 2019 regular meeting. Do we have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes for March 28th, the special session and the regular session for the 28th.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Want to do a roll call vote?
I've initiated electronic vote.
What's that? Oh, okay. The motion carries and, okay, the next item on the agenda, we're done with that, right? No?
Yeah.
Got the roll call vote, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, didn't pick up on that, okay.
Do I vote? I wasn't on the, on the-
You can choose to abstain if you want to, or you can, if you've actually read the minutes and you feel that they're an accurate representation, if you perhaps watched it, you can still vote on it in that case, but you can abstain if you have no knowledge on it.
Thank you.
Should have that option electronically as well.
No, I vote. I was here.
Okay, votes approved, five to no and no extensions. Okay, the next item is public hearing items, or wait, let's see, next item is non-public hearing items, at this time, we have no items. So we'll go on to the agenda for public hearing items. Item number one is a request for a conditional use permit for PEN 18-0216 for a retail cannabis facility. The applicant is Moreno Valley Investment LLC. Can we have a staff report?
Chris Ormsby, our senior planner, will present the staff report for this item.
Chair pro tem, Baker, and members of the Planning Commission. The proposed conditional use permit would allow a retail cannabis dispensary within 2,062 square feet of, within an existing retail office building. The site is located on the north side of Postal Avenue, approximately 300 feet east of Heacock Street, just immediately east, I should say, of the United States Post Office. The applicant received their provisional license in August 2018 and submitted their conditional use permit in November. The project has been reviewed for consistency with the city's commercial cannabis municipal code standards. Center, the shopping center is located within specific plan 204 Village Commercial Residential Zoning. The applicant is proposing hours of operation between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, seven days a week. The project as conditioned is consistent with goals and policies of the general plan as well as the municipal code. The required security plan and odor control plan developed for the project will remain in effect as long as the use is in operation. The proposed dispensary is at the rear of an existing retail office building. It will combine three tenant spaces into one for 2,062 square feet, as I mentioned. This is a little less than half of the square footage of the building. Other tenants in the same building include an insurance real estate office, a hair salon, and a vacant suite. Access to the site is from one existing driveway. One existing driveway on Postal Avenue. The site improvements for the commercial center, which are a total of 4,650 square feet, include 32 parking spaces, so this is plenty of parking as only 21 parking spaces would be required when, in consideration of the retail parking standards. The interior improvements include retail sales area, multiple offices, and a break room. Proposed improvements include development of a 190-square-foot customer waiting area and a 913-square-foot display and sales area. The displays, the play area includes a man trap or secured entry, creating a controlled entrance and exit for one person at a time. In order to improve the appearance of the tenant space and the building, several enhancements to the site will be completed as part of the conditional use permit. Special conditions of approval have been included to require that the applicant enhance existing landscaping, paint the building and fencing, relocate, and replace the existing mailbox in coordination with the U.S. Postal Service, as well as remove the shed that's on the front of the property immediately east of the building. Finally, the applicant will be reconstructing the driveway at Postal Avenue also per the Public Works Condition Number 63. The public hearing notice for this project was published in the local newspaper on March 29th, 2019. Public notices were mailed to all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the site on March 28th, and the notice was also posted on the site on the 29th. No calls have been received on the project. The applicant's representative, Malad, is in the audience, and he also provided a little handout with regard to the project, which has been provided to the Planning Commission on the dais. With that, I'll open it up to questions of staff. Staff obviously has a recommendation as presented, which is to approve Resolution 2019-23 certifying a categorical exemption for the project under Class 1, as well as approving the conditional use permit, PEN 18-0216. With that, I'll open it up to questions of staff.
Are there any questions? The Commissioners have a staff on this project?
Commissioner Harris. The, the very front, there's a lot of glass there. Is that going to be like a thick, like a shatterproof glass, so... I guess there, actually, there's going to be metal behind it, so I guess it really, I was thinking for security purposes that-
I would defer to the applicant on that question.
I want to talk about the hours between 6:00 and 10:00. Are those state laws that set those hours?
That, that is correct, and that also is an ordinance, so they can be from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Other applicants may choose to do reduced hours, but that is the, the limits of the hours that are potential.
I asked that question because, um... There's an applicant that decided to open his business between 9:00 and 10:00. So my question to the staff is, does the applicant choose to open his hours between 6:00 and 10:00, anytime in between 8:00, 9:00, 10:00, or 11:00?
Right. What we've been recommending for applicants is that, that we would adopt the condition to be from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM so that they don't have to come back later to modify the condition of approval if they wanted to change their hours of operation. So that's kind of why we've gone down that path.
So the applicant that got accept, approved for 9:00, he can come, he can open again if he wants at 6:00?
As I recall, the condition of approval was written that way.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions of staff?
I've got one more, I think, sorry.
Actually, Vice Chair, I got 6:00.
Six, okay.
And if, if any other Commissioners have questions, please stop me. Hey, you mentioned the man trap. So one person goes in at a time, and then they go to another place, another waiting area, or they go into the dispensary right away?
I, I can, about the applicant, elaborate on how that would work in this case, but generally, they, they're buzzed into this area so that only one or two people could be in that area at a time, and then somebody on the inside of the building allows them through, so. So that, that's my understanding is how, to how it works. The applicant may want to elaborate on the, that aspect of the operation in conjunction with their particular business.
Okay, thank you.
On the man trap, is that, does that work both ways? Or is that only going in? Would they have to be buzzed, if, say if they were in the place and they did something, the furriers, could they just leave, or would they have to be buzzed into that trap area and then regress from there?
My, my understanding is they would generally have to go out the same way, but again, it could depend on the way it's designed, and so I would defer to the applicant to answer that.
I have a question. Aren't most of the, the rules that are set down for these places, aren't they already set in place as to what is required of them and how they have to operate the business? The city has already told them there are set things that have to be done, just like the hours of business have to be from a set time to set time. They have to have security, they have to have a security guard, they more or less have to have a room where people enter. So all these things are already more or less mandated, aren't they? To where each shop that opens up more or less has to follow a guideline.
Yes.
That's, that was my understanding.
City has general rules that have been adopted, both in chapter, in Title V and in Title IX of our code, and most of those have been incorporated into the conditions of approval. With respect to specifics on security plans, things like how they're going to gate or secure the windows, or how their man trap is going to operate, each one is going to be a little unique and different, but they're all subject to the review and approval of a security plan by the city. That's part of their initial licensing they have to submit, so it has to do with their guards, their camera layouts, all of that type of detail.
Right, so like-
So some of those questions, as we said, are more appropriate for the applicant.
Right, but like Rafael said, basically, one person would go in at a time, they're, the city more or less is not going to be leaning about having four or five customers going in, or we don't have-
We don't set specific numbers like that because sizing and shaping can all be different. Again, they, they have to submit a security plan and layout that the city has to approve, but it's going to be unique for each one. So if you have questions about this one, we would suggest that when we finish with staff questions, that you address those with the applicant, and he can express what they're doing to meet those plans and those guidelines.
Okay.
But there's not a fixed number, like one or two people at a time and that kind of thing, no.
My next question is on the, is on page 15 on the odor control plan. Does the dispensaries all use the same unit, or do, do they pick their own unit for odor
My unders, my understanding is they pick their own unit, but there are certain types of units, certain filtering systems that essentially do the job. Again, the applicant can describe a little more detail how that filtering system works, but certainly, there's different vendors that make those systems that, our ordinance doesn't mandate exactly which system to provide it, but the odor plan would describe that in some detail, and we would make sure that, that particular odor control filtering system is included on the building plans when it comes through plan check.
So the, so the odor control unit that they pick, does it meet a standard that the city requires for the odor to stay inside that building without coming out at all? I mean, because that's, the, the purpose of having an odor control plan, unit, is to keep it inside?
That's correct, and, and these systems can do that if they're designed a certain way, so the intent is to have that documentation provided to the city. That, that needs to be addressed in the odor control plan, and that we feel it is addressed, and that's why we're bringing this to you.
If I could interject, Commissioner, condition number 30 in the conditions of approval specifies the odor control plan, including that it must ensure that odors from the cannabis are not detectable off-site or anywhere on the premises outside.
Okay, I have a question. Who's going to be monitoring that? Will code enforcement periodically go out to these places and make sure that that's in effect?
Yes, code enforcement will go out when needed. We would respond to, you know, comments or complaints from the community, and I anticipate that our staff will be checking on them as well.
Okay, my last one is to the fire department, and it's on page 28, and, um... And it has to do with the Knox Box Rapid Entry. How's that work?
Good evening. The Knox Box is a rapid entry tool that the fire department uses to quickly respond to emergencies. So what it is, it's a ULs'd vault that we will put access keys inside that only the fire department has a key to, to where if there was a fire, an emergency, we could get quickly into the building.
If it, if it occurs a fire after hours, that's what you're telling me, there's a box, a key, you get in?
That's correct.
Great, thank you so much.
Is that with every business that's going to be coming in with the cannabis, is that a requirement?
We require that of all businesses.
Okay.
Um, with fire, is there any particular regulation, which I did not see, any particular regulation to storage of the product inside of a building in the event there's a fire? Then, I guess for lack of a term, what's, you have these things go up in smoke, do all the neighbors get a contact?
As far as special provisions for this building, there isn't anything specific to the storage, but for this type of use, fire sprinklers are required, so that would mitigate, I guess, that concern to a certain degree. If it was a big enough fire to trigger the sprinkler system, it would activate and suppress that fire.
Thinking folks would go around and say, hey, there's a fire at the place, let's go hang out. They wouldn't have to buy anything.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions of staff? Hey, would the applicant like to speak? Applicant, want to come forward, please? State your name, please.
Elad Rafi.
You want to just kind of describe your business and maybe answer some of Commissioner Brugeras's questions there on the man trap and-
Ultimately, it's a retail storefront for cannabis, and in terms of the applicant's, you know, the business hours and the traffic that we're going to be having there, we're going to have security managing the inflow and outflow of traffic, that we'll be constantly communicating with staff. The, the state laws and regulations that we have to fi, that we have to follow in terms of ingress and egress, and a lot of the issues you guys mentioned mitigate or ultimately resolve any of the issues that you guys had brought up. In particular, the issue of the man trap, for instance, on the, there is, in terms of answering how many people are going in at one time and how many are coming out, only one person is going into the man trap and/or coming out at one time. Security will be on both sides of the man trap, in the sales room and in the lobby, and they'll be communicating with staff in terms of, hey, one coming in, one coming out, and they'll control that so there isn't multiple people in the man trap. Ultimately, it's supposed to control the ability for somebody or a group of people to rush into a sales room, so we want to make sure that only one person is going in and out at a time. And in regards to the windows in the front, those are actually all going to be replaced with drywall, so there won't be any frontage window that would leave us up to security issues like that. In terms of fire in the vault, it is actually addressed in the sense that we do need to have safes or a DEA cage protecting that product, and those all provide at least a minimum two-hour fire rating, in addition to the sprinkler systems, which would, you know, mitigate any, anything going up in smoke, and product-wise at least. But, and in terms of the carbon filters as well, too, and for this, for the smoke, I'm sorry, for the odor control, we will have carbon filters of a certain level that were required per the ordinance and on a state level. And then what we'll also have on top of that is a ventilation system that'll be an intake and outtake system that uses negative pressure to take out the stale air that would be in the facility, shoot it above all the buildings so it wouldn't disperse to your neighbors, and then pump in new air as well, too, so there isn't that constant smell of cannabis within the building as well. But, and then in terms of hours, the, you know, we're open to, to changes in hours if that's requested, but ultimately, we don't have any concerns about opening later or earlier if that was an issue.
Have any questions from Commissioners to the applicant?
Sure.
I can just start down here with Commissioner Ossana.
You did mention security, the security on the inside. My understanding is city ordinance states that security also has to be outside. How many security officers are you going to have? I think it's to prevent loitering or anyone hanging out or smoking-
Right.
-within 25 feet, is it 25 feet or 25 yards? Yeah, it's, yeah, it's something like that, 20 feet outside of the premises, so how many security guards do you have for that?
At a minimum, there'll be two, depending, anywhere up to three, possibly four, just depending on the time of day, the amount of patient or clients you expect to be coming through the door, but at a minimum of two, and that'll be at the slowest hours.
Okay. Are you familiar with the area, Postal Avenue?
Uh, yeah, fairly, I mean, not extremely familiar, but, I mean, we have a good idea of the surroundings in terms of who our neighbors are.
Okay, and with that general knowledge, did you think about maybe not staying open so late in that particular area?
Um, I mean, in terms of, you know, safety, the industry in, in terms of regulation has kind of pushed these stores into industrial areas that tend to kind of not be necessarily the best place to be later at night compared to a residential area, but that's also why we have the additional security that's required. We have a very thorough process in terms of how product comes in and out. New deliveries of product don't come in during those times, of course, and would come in at much more secure times earlier in the day. So we limit the amount of activity that happens as, as, as the time gets later throughout the day, but- But with the lack of incidents that, you know, especially our stores have seen by being open that later even later because of our protocol, it hasn't really been an issue. And also to that, the longer we're there and being active and have more people on site and security on site, generally the place is more secure while everybody's there.
Should you have a problem in that area because it is, it is kind of like, like you said, a semi-industrial area where other places will be closed and you will be open? Do you have like an alternative plan of some sort?
We're open to, you know, wherever the city would like us to be positioned. I mean, this was a specific area that was picked out per the ordinance and we're limited ultimately to specific zones and other sensitive use buffers that restrict where you could be. So we would be open if that, you know, if there was better opportunities for areas that weren't so industrial, but ultimately, it's the options that we have. But I don't expect to have issues there strictly on the history of our facilities and they're all in industrial areas. That's just how the regulations on a local level have gone in terms of mapping out where these facilities can be.
Other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Vice Chair. I had, when I went to the site to look at it, I took five pictures. I'm going to start with one, my first one. There's a little shed in the back of the building. What are you going to do with that?
They're requiring us to remove that.
That's fantastic. I'm glad because I saw what was inside of it.
Right.
And I'm glad you're going to do that. My next thing, are you going to keep the bars in the back of the building for safety?
I believe, yeah, there is no reason to remove those.
Okay. And, and I know you're going to paint it and I'm glad that you're going to take down the glass and put the walls up for more security. And you're going to clean it up because it's pretty filthy.
Right.
And I'm glad that you're going to do the landscaping and all those things that I read that you're going to be obligated to. Why I mentioned the time between the last approval and yours is I was thinking of the neighborhoods. The committee, the committee of six o'clock in the morning that maybe that somehow as you start your business, you will find the right time to open. I don't particularly care if you close at ten because that's a decent time, but opening so early in the morning, unless it's the office, I'm talking about the dispensary by itself, because you're going to have office space. That, that's separate, you can open that at six.
Right.
But I'm talking about the dispensary because it is a neighborhood with people that live up the street. You know, you've got the post office there.
Right.
Got the gas station there and then you've got everything on the other side of the street. So I'm just saying that maybe in time that you will find that particular of the business to open a little later. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
You know, it's not going to break, because the law says you can open it at six.
Sure.
But I'm just saying, sharing with you that you will find in yourself to look after the neighborhood
Sure.
That's there. People that do live there, okay? That's what I'm
Absolutely.
Because I drove up and down it. Are you obligated to clean on the other side of the fence that's the freeway where they got trash?
Not sure about that. I'd have to look into, I don't believe so.
I did take a picture of that and this trash right on the other side of the property. I mean, I'm not sure who's going to clean that.
Um, sir, that is Caltrans right of way, so this applicant would not have an obligation to clean it.
Good enough, I mean, I'm just looking for neatness and cleanliness out there.
Have no problem having volunteers help clean that up. That would be, no, we would prefer that ultimately.
Great, thank you. That was, make everything look real pretty when you're done and everything. Okay, my next thing for you, you gave me a flyer. And when I go shopping and I buy things and people give me a flyer, I'm thinking that that's the product that I'm buying. Is this what you're going to put inside that building, this kind of layout?
The layout, that's a layout of one of the stories that we currently have. So yes, that's an example of how we're going to beautify the property and bring it up.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
No problem, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? You know, one, go ahead, Commissioner Harris.
I was just curious if, if your business does really well in that area, do you have the ability to expand the retail part? Because it looks like you have lots and lots of office space within, you know?
Yeah, we could, we don't need as much office space, definitely. We could, after a period of time, sacrifice portions of the break room even and moving it to the other side of the building, but there isn't a good amount of office space that we have. Ultimately, at the time, those were the units that were being opened, so it made sense to take those. The owner of the building is also one of the partners of the business as well too, so they'll work with us ultimately when more space opens up as well too, to expand if need be.
Thank you.
Hey, I had one other question here and maybe it's in the conditions. I wasn't there at the night park, but it seems to me that that parking lot isn't lit too well. Do we have any plans to put some more lighting in that area or not?
Yeah, part of the security plan requirements is, is bringing the lighting up to a certain level, so will we be abiding by the requirements of the city to do that?
Very good, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay.
Chairman Protim, if I could seek a clarification, please?
Good.
Commissioner Bagarres asked about a shed that was being removed. I believe the shed that you're removing is at the front of the property on the east side, am I correct?
Yeah.
There is a shed to the rear of the property on the adjacent property to the east. That one is not the responsibility of this applicant.
So the one behind the building?
To the east, so it's not directly behind the building. There's one towards the back of the property to the east, somewhat close to the fence, the Chingling fence. That is not on this property, that's on the adjacent property. I just wanted to be clear, he is removing a shed that's at the front that's, you know?
It's on the back, it's on the backside of the property, so maybe that's what you're?
I believe the one that Commissioner Bagarres is talking about is towards the rear and to the east, yes. It looks, it's actually on the adjacent property.
So that's a different property.
Exactly, exactly.
So we're going to have that shed stay there, that's?
Yes, unless this applicant owns that property as well, which I don't believe he does, he wouldn't have control over that. I just wanted to be clear in case that's what you were referring to.
Right, that's what I was referring to, the back one. So I didn't see the front one, I wasn't paying attention to anything in the front because the back one was the worst one that I saw personally, so.
He will be cleaning up, there's one in the front that's a little, it's unsightly looking and this will be cleaned up with this application, but he does not control the adjacent property.
I have some clarification for the members here. My name's Christopher Glue, I actually am the legal counsel for the entity and actually the property owner is sitting with us back there and listening to your conversation. She indicated to me that the actual adjacent property is hers as well and she's already indicated that they're in the process of removing the shed that you're specifically referring to. Even though it's not our obligation, we would like to just let you know personally that that is being resolved.
To the owner, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be a pleasure not to see that shed, really, because I know what's in it. I took pictures of it. I know what's inside that shed and if you can clear that shed, it'll make the property look real nice on both sides. Thank you so much, really, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, applicant, or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we're going to open up to the public hearing. Do we have any public testimony?
Yes, sir, we have six public speakers.
Public speakers, okay.
Starting with Joaquin Los Trono.
Joaquin, you want to come forward and state your name?
Yes, good evening, my name is Joaquin Los Trono. I would like to thank the commission for this brief moment. You only see one man right here, but I'm sure I represent the views of thousands, thousands, thousands of Moreno Valley residents, okay? I have been in Moreno Valley since the early nineties. I love my city, I love the growth that's been happening within our city. What concerns me and many others like myself is certain businesses, and we're talking about a dispensary tonight, right? I am not an expert, but from what I've read, I've read of people getting accidents, people getting addicted, we cannot deny that, there's medical effects through this type of a product. This area that we're talking about in the Postal Avenue's area, it is a commercial area, but it's very close to residential. I mean, like, sir, you were there, you know what I'm talking about? Walking distance and it's a very, very low socio-economic area. I don't live in that area myself, but for me as a Moreno Valley resident, that is a concern also, okay? I am a father of a teenager and I don't want my teenager being, seeing more temptation, more thing that he should not have to be exposed to. So speaking as a parent, I am concerned. So I requested this couple of minutes just to verbalize to this, the committee, the commission, that even though you only see one man right here tonight, I'm sure, I'm speaking on behalf of thousands, thousands of other residents of our city. We are so thankful for this commission, the growth of the city, and we know it's great, but certain businesses, we just rather, you know, we take a second look, take a second look. That area is a very, very low socio-economic area, walking distance, those kids do not need to be exposed to this type of an industry, with all due respect to the gentlemen's. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker will be, I don't know, it's Abstrallo, help me out on that.
Osvaldo Haros.
Sorry, I couldn't pronounce it. Please state your name, please, and maybe your address.
My name is Osvaldo Zuniga Haros and I would have probably just one question really for the gentleman over here, is what is the main purpose and the goal of opening up a dispensary at, just, you know, in Moreno Valley here? And also, not sure if you are aware of, which I'm sure you probably are, is there's a elementary in middle school, or a middle school, I believe, that is closer to where the area is? And just me living here in Moreno Valley for about ten years, I've been exposed to this type of product and I've seen the impact that it does, as Joaquin was also talking about, is also my concern on just how it's going to be handled and to really take a second thought of the impact it can make on the community itself and in the individuals in the area, in the city, and to really just again, reiterating that, to take a second look to think of opening one of the dispensaries there. And that would just be my one question for the gentleman, is the main purpose or the goal for opening a dispensary? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and the next speaker will be Troy Shredded. Please state your name and your address here in Moreno Valley.
Good evening, I'm Troy Shreded, 12125 Day Street, Moreno Valley. I guess I first just have a question. Is it, my understanding that a dispensary has to be beyond, is it six hundred or one thousand feet from any school, church, temple, or like business? Six hundred feet, right? Okay, just wanted to clarify that. I'm aware of another one that's on the agenda coming apparently to a retail center that is within, is definitely within a thousand feet, if the number's six hundred, then it's definitely out of the jurisdiction of doing that, but did the city council, if I recall reading, approve to have eight dispensaries in the city of Moreno Valley, is that right? No one knows?
The number is higher and I want to say it's twenty-three?
Yeah, twenty-three, but I think they voted against that October of two thousand eighteen.
Not that I'm aware of.
It's really up to the commission whether or not they want to receive answers from staff, we can't engage in conversation with you, it's okay.
My first time in front of the planning commission.
Yeah, that's fine.
I've been at the city council meetings.
At the conclusion of a public comment, if the staff, if the commission wants to take questions from staff, they can and then the applicant will also be able to speak after all.
Just getting educated on it, so, and also too, I can't see the name plaque for you, sir, but it says, according to the law, state of California, there should be no sales of alcohol, tobacco, or there should be no smoking, vaporization, or consumption of alcohol, tobacco, cannabis, or medical cannabis in any form within the dispensary or retail storefront tenant space. And then another B three of that same thing, during all specific hours must be a two-block radius of a security guard patrol. So just to make you aware of that. So I just wanted really some education on how this is happening in the city of Moreno Valley and how it's going down and I'm sure the applicant can't answer me maybe, but if, I know he's busy texting, but do you live here in Moreno Valley? Okay. The building owner's doing it. Right.
To address the?
He addressed the planning commission.
Oh, address you guys, okay. I just, you know, it's easy for people to come from the outside to destroy a city, so.
Thank you for your comments and the next speaker will be Chad Cornell. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Chad Crandall. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for giving me the time to speak. I'm here to address a major issue that is affecting our city and nation. What happened for the fight for justice, morals, family safety, and all of the above. Our city has grown dramatically, a place that was nearly deserted turned into a place where parents could bring their children and youth. A cannabis dispensary in this area will affect the business circle's reputation, culture, and business. We are pleading to you, council, to make a decision that best fits a family-friendly zone. Young families will be deterred because of the environment it will create. People are reckless and abusive of cannabis. Massive security is needed to prevent abuse on a wide, on a wide-scale basis. Security should be patrolled for miles to ensure the safety of our people. Will security be twenty-four hours? If not, people will loiter to support their addiction. This will cause problems, addicts against addicts. This ominous feeling of fear will overcome us all if we don't take a stand. Moreno Valley needs to step up its game. There are many good people in this city, but if we allow anyone to do what they want, it will lead to our demise. Thank you for your time, God bless.
Thank you for your comment and the next speaker will be Joseph Sightly, or Slightly. Please state your name and your address, Joseph.
Hi, I'm Joseph Chitai and I'm a property owner at 25306 Shore Hill Road, Moreno Valley. And I've been living in Moreno Valley, well, I used to live in Moreno Valley for several years, I'm still a property owner here, and I have seen this city grow, but not to the best reputation. And that has, that saddens me to hear from other peers that live around the city, it's like, oh, how can you have a property in Moreno Valley or how can you live over there? So the reputation for Moreno Valley, in my opinion, out of outsiders is not great. So adding to this cannabis to our city is just going to worsen the reputation that it already has. I have two children, two kids in the back, a two and a five-year-old, and I want to know the cities that they lived in were great cities. And not only that, I work for an organization that we always support military and the homeless population has grown with the military, so to add this on top of them, to be an addiction to cannabis, also it's going to, you know, affect from what are my company that I work for, it's not my company. We support our military and we know their struggles, we know what they want, and sometimes either alcohol, smoking, and now with the cannabis making it easier for them to get it, it's going to bring down not only this city, but surrounding cities if we're continuing with this kind of a development in our local cities. So I just want to, you know, keep that as a thought and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. The next and final speaker will be Cindy Loomis. Oh, there she is, okay. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Cindy Loomis, and I'm coming representing Generations Church, one-two-one-two-five Day Street. And I'm coming to you as a church member who you can say is a survivor of substance abuse. And I am a mother of two children. And I can say that I've noticed that dispensaries are usually in places of disadvantaged communities. And when you are dealing with situations like this and don't have the means for help with recovery, it doesn't help to see families, real families, these are real families, real people with real struggles, going through these situations, and having these dispensaries does not aid the situation. We have, I'm part of this church in which part of what we do is try to provide ways to help people overcome this. And so, in a way, it's a bit detrimental to, it defeats the purpose in a sense to what we're trying to accomplish over here. Again, I go back to the fact that I'm a survivor of that, and I can tell you that from the standpoint of a child, which they're the ones that don't have a voice. A lot of the times, their parents are not well-labeled to actually care for them when they are under substance abuse. And I understand that it's not all necessarily bad, not everybody's gonna misuse the product. But the problem happens when you lose your freedom to choose. When addiction sets in, it becomes detrimental to the families, but to the ones, the little ones that don't have a voice. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? Would the applicant like to address any of the comments made here from the crowd, maybe?
The primary point we wanted to make in addressing pretty much all the comments was that the impact we've had on all the communities that we've entered has been to uplift the community. Not only from, yes, we're gonna beautify the property and increase the value, and also neighboring properties will benefit from that, but from the aspect of providing to nonprofits throughout Moreno Valley and throughout Riverside County, helping with addiction issues and issues like that that currently exist. And then from the standpoint of, like the gentleman said earlier, growing up here, you know, he's been exposed to the product already. And what we bring is regulation, we bring security, we bring, you know, efficient processes that the city and the state have to sign off on that help divert, you know, the issue of the product getting into the wrong hands, and actually help get rid of a lot of those problems that already exist.
One of the things I'd also like to highlight is we have created strategic partnerships with a lot of the community activists and different folks that have spoken out against marijuana being in their communities. And I would welcome and share my contact information with all the folks that are here tonight, and develop ways that we can work with the community, because we understand that this is a product that, you know, people have happy to engage with you and work with you to try and find ways to be of benefit to the community, try and establish a good rapport on strategies that would eliminate, if not completely, you know, try and work to all the concerns that you've brought to the table. So if you guys want additional security, we can work on a plan for additional security. Drug education programs, rehabilitation, happy to do that. Being members of the community, we are here for the long haul. We are gonna create a fire. We have union programs. So we are looking to be better partners with the community, and it is our uplift, not to stagnate. We want to bring the community all the locations we've ever been in, we end up having good alliances with the community. Probably have you here speaking on us, or on our behalf, in a year from now.
Sir, you ought to be addressing it to the commission. I appreciate
I apologize.
No, I appreciate you sharing that with the public.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
There are no other comments at this time. I'll close public comments, and we'll go to deliberations. You want to start?
Well, I think what some of the public doesn't realize is that it has been approved by the city, and the voters approved to prove the cannabis to come into the city. And we're doing our due diligence as to protecting the citizens of the city. And that's why everybody has put certain laws into place and certain specific things that need to be done. And there's regulations, and I think a lot of the public really need to look and there is a website set up where they can look at all the facts and get the facts. This is not just a pot shop and illegal, they're taking the illegal ones out of the city, trying to safely place a business, and it is a business, where people that want to buy the product and have to be of age can do so. Just like buying alcohol or whatever, and there are gonna be little repercussions with certain things, but I really think that a lot of the the misgivings of this product need to be looked into and educated. You know, the public really needs to be educated, because a lot of people come up here and they say things about, you know, them coming into the city when it's already, it's coming, it's coming, it's here. And we're just gonna be, try to be very careful about where they're gonna be, how they're gonna be set up. And I don't wanna be, keep preaching to the choir, but I think education. There's a website, like I said, the city has a website, they need to look into that, and that way we won't have so many misgivings about this. Our job up here is to make sure that they're in the areas they need to be in. All the things need to be in place, and whether they're able to get a conditional use permit. So we're not here to try to downgrade a neighborhood and basically make it the safest business that we can have. I know that I've walked into some liquor stores in the city that really aren't quite as safe as I thought they would be. And they have a lot of times people running in there and running out without paying. But these are very, there's a lot of stringent rules. So I'm really sorry sometimes to hear people, and it makes me kind of a little bit sad, but that's all I have to say about that.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes, I just wanted to say that when this all came to a vote statewide, if you look at just Moreno Valley, approximately sixty-seven percent of people voted to, you know, have recreational cannabis in the city. So, and then as far as anybody coming in saying that they're representing thousands of Moreno Valley residents, well, I have no way of confirming how many people they represent. Anyway, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Bagarres?
I went around this property three times. And I went from the gas station all the way to back avenue, or back way. I made a right to head to Sudden Me Boulevard. And on my left-hand side, I saw a lot of traffic, a lot of cars. As I got closer to the corner, there's an illegal shop there right now, selling marijuana. Okay? When I drove by, I smelled the marijuana coming out of that building. Yes, there's somebody sitting outside, but that's an illegal shop right now. What I'm sharing is, if we put legal shops in the places that the city allows them to, they bring security. They have a security plan, they have the odor, the odor plan to clean the air so that don't get out. I understand, believe me, believe me about marijuana. I was born in Harlem, I know about marijuana. Okay? And I know about recovery very well. And I'm proud of the lady that made it. But you have to have a will not to do marijuana if you don't want it. But we're not here to take away the privileges of people that voted for it. But what we're trying to do as commissioners is to make sure that the applicant follows the law and the city ordinance that we placed last year and this year. That's what we're here for, to make sure that the applicant follows the law. If they don't, you, the residents, have the right to file a complaint. So the staff can send out the coenforcer to find out what's going wrong. The other thing is, if it's something wrong, in a year, they come back to us to get re-approved. We'll be listening to the complaints. But listening to him right now, he's committed to help the residents with security. He's committed to clean that corner up, to make it a profitable place to do business. They'll have lights, they have security guards. They're gonna have things that are not there right now, that shed, that's going to be removed voluntarily. That was a problem that's not gonna be there no more. So somebody can no longer live in it and do illegal drugs, or worse. That's what I would worry about, if my child would come down to the corner and get caught up in that little shed. So I'm glad that they listen to us to remove that. I really truly feel for everyone that don't understand marijuana or cannabis. It does two things. It can help somebody with cancer, and can also do something else, as I was mentioning. But that's a choice. So I say to those parents, teach your kids well to say no. But today, they proved to us that they're going to be liable. I don't know what's gonna happen with the votes, but I'm glad that they're gonna do their part for that part of the committee and that part of that little commercial place. And the homes are basically back avenues, so it's quite a distance between the post office and back, there's a distance. Yes, you can walk to the corner, but it is a distance to that facility. So I know they do well, because we will be watching them.
Thank you. Commissioner Dill-Zanetta, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just thank everybody for coming out and sharing their comments with us. I think my personal thought, when I look at a plan of this and hear the comments and hear everybody speak. Moreover, I weigh the difference personally, legal versus illegal. Being in this city for so many years, marijuana's not going anywhere. Whether or not an illegal shop is there, there's probably gonna be marijuana. And I agree with my constituent down there is that, yes, education needs to take place. Because if this shop doesn't go up, marijuana is not going to disappear. But if I had to choose between a place going up, I would much rather have a legal place go up. Because then the difference is, if an illegal shop is there and the odor's coming out and people hanging out, they don't have to follow any rules or regulations or any type of city ordinance. In order to move that shop, investigations have to take place, complaints have to come in. And then, how long is it gonna take an investigation to build that case in order to legally say, hey, you're breaking the law? Versus a legal shop going in, and we have pages and pages and pages and volumes of ordinances and laws and everything that they have to follow, and if they don't, code enforcement can go in there and say, hey, this isn't happening, goodbye, you'll lose your license. So I would rather have legal versus illegal. And I'd rather have the added security, the added lighting, the added code enforcement, the added everything that's going in versus not having any of that to back up a place that was gonna be there. We're not going to get rid of illegal marijuana. So, and I think about some things, and thank you for your comments. So I have to weigh it over before I make my vote, but I really appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. One final thing here. Has anybody else got any more comments? The only thing I would say, and all the businesses I've been involved in over the years, this is the most regulated business I've seen in my life. I mean, this is down to the nitty-gritty, and I think the city is really on top of this. And I know the ones up here, and we're gonna have to approve every one of these, and I guess we've got twenty-three of them coming up, so. And I appreciate what the public's saying, you know, I've got, you know, twelve or thirteen grandkids, I know what this is all about. But like the other commissioners said, it's all about education, and I think this owner's got it on cue on what he's going to do. So it said that, I don't know how else we can approach this, but, you know, like Commissioner Harris said, you know, this passed like sixty-seven percent for cannabis back two or three years ago. So it's here to stay, and I think if we're gonna have it, we need to regulate it. It's been like, the legal council said, it's been like Wachamoe knocking down these illegal shops around town. They pop up quick as we can put them down, so. And I do appreciate what the public said here. It's a tough situation, and it's hard to sit up here and make this decision. But our job here is to make sure they followed all the regulations that the planning department set out. And as far as we can see, it's a hundred percent above board. So that's where it's at. We just have to vote as we go forward. Is there any other comments or deliberations? Otherwise, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this project.
I'll second.
Who made the motion? Okay. I guess I asked
You need a second?
I just asked for a motion.
You got the motion.
Okay, and you got the second. Okay, very good, and now we'll vote.
Yeah.
Did we miss something there?
Okay, we have to read.
Are you, what do you exactly move, what is exactly the motion to approve? To approve the resolutions?
I'm sorry.
Like, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two-zero-one-nine-dash-two-three. I think it's also a condition use permit, eighteen-zero-two-one-six, do we have to do that as well?
It's incorporated.
In the resolution that you just
And I'll second.
Okay. Okay, we got a second, or a motion to move forward and a second. Can we have a vote? Vote electronically, I guess, okay. Okay, we got a five-oh vote with two absent. Okay, do we need to have a staff wrap-up on this, correct?
Yes, thank you. The action taken by the planning commission tonight is an appealable action. Any interested party that would like to file an appeal may do so within fifteen days of the action. The appeal needs to be filed in writing directed to the community development director, stating specific reasons for the appeal and accompanied by the filing fee. If an appeal is received, it would be agendized for a public hearing before the city council. Thank you.
Do we have any staff comments at this point?
Yes, Commissioner. At the last meeting, there was a question regarding how the city is dealing with the unlicensed illegal dispensaries in the city. And at the time, I couldn't share much. I can share much more with you tonight. As you know, the city's been, over the last ten years, as all cities has, has been dealing with how to swiftly remove and shut down the illegal unlicensed operators in the city. We've gone through court orders and some time and evictions and many different processes. We've instituted a new program here in the city that just started this week, which has proven quite effective and quite proven quite effective and quite quick at remediating the problem. I can inform you at least that we started on Tuesday. We shut down, we went in and shut down a dispensary on Tuesday, we did it again yesterday, and we did it again today. And by shutdown, I mean complete and total closure. We went in with the assistance of code enforcement, building and safety, fire, city attorney's office, and the sheriff's deputies, all convened to remove everybody from the premises. All the marijuana, marijuana product was all destroyed. All, any products or fruits of that were impounded, as well as any money, any safes were cracked and opened, computers were seized, and the facilities were boarded up, locks were changed, and the, the premises are all under a court order right now to remain vacant until either the court or the city has allowed for a new tenant to come in. So we found this process to be very effective, it's very aggressive, and we expect to see more of it in the future. But three days, three dispensaries, and if you keep, keep up, you're going to see quite a bit more.
Thank you so much.
If I may also thank you, I just wanted to congratulate and welcome our newest planning commissioner, Commissioner Brugeras. We're happy to have you with us, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any commissioner comments in closing here?
I have one. And this is to the residents. I hope you got a chance to listen to the city attorney tonight. We're becoming aggressive. We're taking down the illegal ones, the ones that, the ones that do not care about your family at all. They bring bad elements to the neighborhood. Those are the ones that hurt you the most. By having the legal ones, you'll see it controlled better with security, surveillance cameras, everything that we never had before, we're having it today. And I do have respect for each one of yous that come up here. I understand. But to be, to beat a bad situation, we gotta find a better one, and we found one tonight. And hopefully, there'll be many more like that in the future, and that's the only way that we can beat them. And for those mom and dads like mines, just say no.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if that be, the next planning commission will be, be on the twenty-fifth of April, and we adjourned here at eight-twenty a.m. or p.m. tonight. Thank you.